Switch B and A, so we're going to do the budget update because by the time we're done with that, we're probably be running right into needing to pass the tentative budget. So we're going to go ahead and do that. So Ms. Wilson, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. All right. So just to go through, you've seen this calendar before. This is where we've been in the budget process. We've pushed the HR budget one, two, three, four times. The DOE provided the calculation. It came out late this year. Usually it comes out on Monday of that week. It did not come out till Friday of that week. The budget was advertised in the paper on Saturday. I don't know if you all got your papers and looked. And today we are here to approve the tentative budget and the milled rates and to give you a quick overview of the five-year plan. Okay. So the screen is a little hard to see probably. You have the printed version. This is just summary of your millages and the taxable values, the taxes collected and the percent of the taxes budgeted that we collected. So I'm going to give you a couple graphical depictions. The first one, this is the budget to taxes collected. The dark blue is the budget. The light blue is the amount that we collected. We generally collect over 100%. And this year it was like 101.63, I think. The only years we did not collect over 100% would have been the years that we went through the issues with Duke. So we do very well and we collect over 100% of our taxes budgeted. Now remember, we are allowed to budget 96% of the levy. That's to allow for uncollected. So that's why we actually collect more taxes than we budget. All right. So this is the taxes collected. The blue is our required local effort. The red is our capital. I do want you to take notice in the next couple slides how back in 10 years ago, we were collecting, we were budgeting and collecting over $60 million in required local effort. And we're down to a little over 40 now. So even though our property values have increased, the amount of taxes that we as a school district are collecting is decreasing.
Well, on that slide, while it's a small amount on the previous one on the local required effort, it's surprisingly still fractionally more. Does that, and clearly we don't have control of that. That's the state that did. Did they, they just go slightly above the rollback rate?
This year, it looks like they did. Last year, we didn't. It was our discretionary and capital that pushed us over the rollback rate last year. But this year, they just went a little bit over.
And that's if I recall. So again, that's the state that set that for us.
Yes, the state sets that for us. So here is our tax budget in whole. This is the required local effort. The discretionary that we levy, the .748, that is the purple. And that stays the same all the time. The red is the capital improvement. That's been at 1.5 for over 10 years now. And then the very, on the first three years of this slide, you'll see we had levied that .25 critical capital outlay when they reduced from two to 1.5 mils. So that's still in there. And like I said, that was seven years ago was the last time we got that. Again, you'll see the, the blue is the required local effort and how that has drastically reduced over the years. Instead of increasing, it's actually reducing.
2011, 2012 was the last time we had a full two mil?
No, we were still at 1.5. That was...
I think it was '07 or '08.
'07 or '08.
'07, was it that far? Okay.
Yes. Then we levied that critical capital outlay for four years. We were allowed to right after they went down to 1.5.
So it was still then, it was at 1.5 or 1.7?
Well, it was 1.75 because we levied that .25.
It was 1.5 and then you got .25.
And then you had to, by supermajority, you had the option too. So we had up to 1.75 in '10 and '11. I mean, in '10 and '11 and then '11, '12.
And '12, '13.
And '12, '13.
Yes.
In '12, '13, is that also then just following that was when we also had Duke? We had the Duke Energy situation?
Yes, that would have been, yes, that was '12, '13 was Duke.
So that's where, so you can see the difference that the community is now, we are under. We have as many schools still and we have as many, we have even more buses today that we needed than we did then. Not to mention that we are that much older.
We have school guards. The Guardians we added.
Well, I'm thinking of just the capital, the capital, not the operations.
Correct. Okay. So that was the amount of taxes, the dollar. Here's the millage. So the tax dollars went down because the millage has gone down. You see, the blue is the, the millage had, was up at our highest. We were at 5.527. This year, we're down to 3.877, which is the lowest it's been since I've been here 15 years. So this is the lowest that our millage has been, at least in the last 15 years.
So if I'm paying taxes and I'm looking at how much I paid last year to the school system, would my taxes look higher or lower from last year to this year?
It would actually look higher this year because your property value went up so much, so significantly. So the millage went down, yes. If the millage had stayed the same, it would have been extremely much more taxes, but...
Slight increase.
Just a slight increase, yes. All right. All right. So here's our taxable value is the blue. It's going up nicely, which is good for all of us as homeowners. And our millage is going down, which is not good for us as a school district. Again, the state sets that for us. When we got the final conference report, we were at 3.9 and they dropped us down. I think we were 3.915 and they dropped us down to 3.877. So we're going to go over that in the next, the next few slides. All right. So here's our FEFP. The second calculation, like I said, it came out the, not the last week. We were in 410s. The week before that, it came out on that Friday. And the second calculation, our property values went up almost half a billion dollars. You'll see that school taxable value, 497 billion, 47 million, 593,000. So let's go to the next. So if we go down to where it says total, total state funding, they decreased our state funding by 1.7 million dollars because our local funding increased by 1.8 because our taxable value. So our taxable value did go up. And even though the millage went down, we're still bringing in more taxes, but the state lowered their portion. So we only ended up with 91,478 dollars in addition to the FEFP from the first to the second calculation, which is that bottom number there. So here's our base FEFP funding. This has our unweighted and weighted, the base student allocation, the FEFP funding. And these are the figures. I'm going to show the slides after this because that's a better picture. All right. So this shows our base student allocation, which took a little dip and then it has increased. And from '17, '18 to '18, '19, of course, we know it, we got 40 cents, was it? I can't remember.
Forty cents.
Forty-nine cents, that's right. It wasn't even, it doesn't even show on here is the difference. And then this year, we did get 4,279 dollars, which was an increase of about 75 dollars. So that did go up. The red line is our base student allocation. So because the, the FEFP funding went up, the base student, because the base student allocation went up, the FEFP funding went up. All right. So here's just a difference in our weighted versus unweighted. And if we look at the historical comparison, we did have a few years where we, we lost some students, but we are gradually increasing every year. And the weighted seems to increase right along with our unweighted. So that's just a little graphical depiction for you. This sheet is a combination of all the funds. This is basically a smaller version of what was in the paper on Sunday. This shows our general fund, our debt service, capital, food, the other federal, which is our Title I, IDEA, Title IV, Carl Perkins, all those federal grants that we get, that's our other federal programs. TEL is in there. And then our internal services, our self-insurance fund. So with this, the bottom right corner, that's 243,879,072 dollars. You'll be seeing that quite a bit at 5:30. So just so you know where that number comes from. And this is just the same numbers. It's just broke down by object versus function. And as you notice, of course, if we look at our totals of our appropriations, total appropriations for the whole district is 195 million. 93.97 million of that is salaries. So that's almost half of our budget is salaries. And then you add the benefits in there at 28 million. So you can see the big chunk is human capital is our biggest expense. Now I want to let you know that this number is based on where the fund balance will be at the end of the year plus our expenses that we had. So that'll be our appropriations and fund balances how we have to vote on the budget. The general fund. All right. So here's our favorite little sheet with our fund balance percentages. We're still, we still have some monies coming in. We just had tax, June tax dollars came in today. Those did get added in before I put these numbers out. But we still have a few things coming in from last year. So we're still unreconciled for June 30. But as of this moment, we are at 5.32% for this 40. I say current because I'm still in '18, '19, but actually for last fiscal year. So we did end up with a little bit of a surplus, about $700,000, which is good. We didn't have to use our fund balance. The last column is the proposed budget for next year. And this is the tentative proposed budget. We will be using about $3 million of our fund balance next year. So it will drop us down to 4.67 if everything stays consistent with how it's been. Now the increases to the general fund, these are the main increases. I didn't line item every little tiny thing, but the biggest ones that hit us was the FRS, of course. Almost $200,000. The one-time market increase for our instructional staff, that's, they're on year three of the three-year plan that they negotiated three years ago, is about 1.35 million. The steps for the support was about 335,000. And this is just general fund. The federal fund, the food service fund, they had FRS. Federal had teacher salary increases. So that's, you know, if they get the same amount of money, they can't pay for as many teachers because they have to pay more money for those teachers now, so, or those supports. So just keep that in mind. These are just the figures for the general fund. And then we added the Guardian program, which is right around $500,000 that we're putting out to fund that. That's their salaries, that's their uniforms, that's the additional liability insurance. That's, that's all the costs that are encumbered in that program. So here we have the difference. The red line is, and I can't see this, that is our unrestricted fund balance. And then the blue is the restricted. So the big drop, which will come off in a couple of years, but that's when they changed the way we had to restrict the fund balance. We only had to restrict it for what encumbrances we carried over. Now they have us restrict it for everything and anything, it seems. So we only have so much that we can, we can actually play with, that we have the ability to make decisions on what we use that for.
And I know you've probably already passed, I know you've passed this, but that's part of the thing with the issue with the BSA is while the BSA was increased, we also had a tremendous number of categoricals that were reduced or eliminated in, in order to put it into the BSA.
Yes.
And if I recall, the amount we, if we were to look back, the amount we've taken away from the categoricals may or may not increase the amount to the BSA.
Exactly. And so I brought you back to the screen, but this is just the difference between the first and second calculation. The one that really shows it is from the fourth calculation of '18, '19 to the conference report. That's where we saw the big shift at the BSA. It looks like it went up, but then they restricted a lot of the funds below it. So, you know, we have best and brightest in, in the FEFP now. We've always gotten that money and now it's part of our FEFP. So it's restricted.
Instructional technology was shifted out from a categorical into the BSA?
A lot of it.
A lot of it was. I mean, not that, I think about 70%.
It was like 740,000, I believe, last year and it's 200.
And that was, that's been a sticky point within, in the compression funding. And both of those have been sticky points that have, that talked about since it happened because the governor was very proud of some of the increases to technology funding and to techno, to funding technology initiatives. And then people asked the question, the media of, well, but then where, then why did you cut 70% of it in the categorical? And, and the answer is, well, this gives districts more flexibility. That goes back to that 47 cents we, that we got the year before. Remember, we were, we were talking about this at FSBA. Be careful what you wish for. You may just get it. And so we did by them saying, okay, well, we'll give it to the BSA. We'll just take it out of the categoricals. So it, so the BSA was increased, but it was at the cost of the categoricals. We didn't get extra money. I guess that's, that's the bottom.
We're still doing the best we can with what we have.
And I know that the legislature is trying to balance things as well, but we just have to be honest with ourselves too. We really have to be honest of where we are.
So the screen we have up now, this is our general fund revenues and expenditures. The revenues are in the blue and generally you'd like to see that be higher than the red, which is our expenses. So for the most part, we had a couple of years in the beginning, we were higher and then we leveled out. And then now this year, 2020, to propose, we're going to have to dip into our fund balance when that red line goes higher than the blues, when we have to use our fund balance. So this just kind of shows you historically what years we've had to use our fund balance. All right. So this is, all the revenues broke down. This is where we are right now. It's a lot to go over, but this is, you know, line by line and you can look at this. Does anybody, how many questions on this? And then here's our expenses, the same thing. We just do a comparison for you so that you can see the difference of where we are ending this year and how much we are spending this year and what we are budgeting next year. And here we have it by object. So you can see here, this is just the general fund again, remember. And you can see that our salaries, it's 5.33% increase in salaries this year. Not only is that the, the teacher third-year raise, but we also, we added the Guardians and we also added the Shine project. We added positions there. That project is funded, so it did, we did get revenue on the other side, but it also increases our salaries and our benefits. So overall, our budget is about 3.91% more than what we spent last year. And here's a graphical depiction of the pie, just to show 62% of our general fund is salaries, 19% is benefits. So together we have there 81% of our budget is salary and benefits. And these are just the next few slides are the funds. We have the debt service fund. And I'll go on another slide when we go over capital to show you where we're at with that. We did get a nice increase in our fair market value of our sinking funds that we've been buying to pay for, Chris River High. They increased $875,000 in value this year, but it's a moving target and the Fed is looking to cut the interest rates. So we could start seeing that decline this next year. But for '18, '19, they did very well. Here is our capital fund and so...
Let me ask a question. Even the return would decline.
Return. The fair market value of, of our, our holdings that we have. We have to buy sinking funds. We buy T strips and they have a fair market value. So they increase and they decrease and we have to book them either way. We have to report those, whether they increase or they decrease. We have to book those. So, all right. So here we have our capital fund. And as we know, we all know that our PICO dollars are, are going away. So there's no money budgeted for PICO. You can see that's 100% decline there. Some of the other stuff in here, Miss Landis Local Sources, that, that was, that, that was WTC paying the capital fund to remodel the kitchen. So that actually, that's an actual for last year and then it, we won't have that next year, of course. So here's our expenses. We're trying to keep those pretty steady as we're not seeing a lot of increase in our capital fund. So, and we'll go over the five-year plan here in just a minute. So the capital fund budget is going to increase about 5.7%. So here's our work plan. We started off with our school taxable value. And as you can see, of course, we get more money every year as our taxable value goes up. We are conservative. We only budget 3% of our value to rise. It did rise quite a bit more this year, but just for the five-year work plan, we go with 3%. And then we get down to the other revenues here. We have PICO, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0. So that's gone away. Impact fees, that will be for the Roger Weaver. We'll be getting impact fees for that. And then we do have some E-rate refundable things that Ms. Androwski and Mr. Fletcher are hopefully working on in years two, three, four, and five to increase some of our network and we'll be able to get E-rate back on that. All right. So here's the expenditure side of the capital fund. So as you can see, our expenses, you know, we're at 21 million for this year, about 21 million next year. We're right around the 20, 21 million every year. But as our revenues decrease a little bit, our fund balance should be, it looks like it'll be down in five years to 11.3, which is better than what we brought to you last month or the month before when Mr. Bishop and I brought these to you. But it's still not, you know, over the top amount, so...
And let's be clear, why is it better?
Because our property value increased.
And also adjusted projects.
Yes, we adjusted projects.
I mean, we, it wasn't that, we, we did make up the difference from the property values. We, we had to go in there and have another hard look, which we had to do year after year, a few years. And again, you go back to the Duke plant, it's a serious concern.
And we did add in a line here for safety and security, which was brought to you a couple, couple meetings ago to add a line item in there. So that's in there. Okay. So these are just different slides of our, here's our, our bonds. As you can see, we're at about 2.66 a year is what we purchase, so that we'll have that 35 million in April of 2027. And here's our sinking fund deposit schedule. So the top part is based on the sinking funds that we've bought so far. They adjust this top piece every year based on interest rates, based on how much we were able to get for the T-shirts that we bought. And so we're at 2.66 million a year. We have to purchase them next year. It'll be a little different depending on what we get in April. The bottom piece is what we have in sinking funds. They will par at 12,532,000 right now. Their present value is about $800,000 higher than that. So that's where that market value comes in. And we have to record that on our financial statements. So we're, we're almost halfway there. 12 million next year, we'll be right about halfway there. So here's our planning and growth. We always put about 50,000 in for new land purchases if Mr. Dixon happens to find anything that's worth us purchasing. And we put a little budget out there for him. There's also an impact fee study. This has been in the budget for the last three years. I believe they're going to actually do it this year.
I just sent you the, it's a little less than that, actually.
Okay. So this will get adjusted a little bit. They just got that started. All right. So transportation, new buses, and then we have to work on the bus list at Chris River in Iverness. And here's the bus replacement plan. 11 one year, 10 the next, 11, 10, 11, 10. And this is something that was adjusted a few years ago to kind of scale it back a little bit. Technology. Here's our iPad lease. We have a three-year commitment at this time. And then in the fourth year, if we buy the iPads that we were leasing and start another, and start another lease, that's in there. And now this is a five-year plan, so this is just a plan for the future. It's nothing set in stone. We also have time clocks that we have to replace. And then our phone system, those are for phones we need to replace, new phones. And then working on getting an intercom this system, system this year.
We did commit on the iPads, the right to lease for three years.
Yeah, I think she's talking about after.
I meant the fourth, the fourth and fifth year, yes. It's just a plan.
Good question, Ms. Bishop.
All right. So we have our technology plan and we have our Dell servers that we leased this year. So we have a commitment to pay for those. And then if we have to replace any in the fifth year or, and buy them out. And different things that Ms. Androwski and Mr. Fletcher have in plans, cabling, necessary things like batteries, video projectors, document cameras, switches, audio system stocking stations. They do have computer, student computers in there for 19, 20, and 20, 21. And then they will start replacing staff computers in the following three years. Here is a list of all of our enterprise software that we're able to pay for with capital. This is anything that helps the enterprise of the district run. We cannot use this for any of our educational software, but we can use it for Skyward. We can use it for any HR purposes. You can see the document management system. We can use it for board docs. We can use it for our website maintenance, our call-out system. Let's see what else is in there. You have your tracking system for transportation. You have your tracking system for maintenance. You have your tracking system for, for IT maintenance. Any of that stuff that is needed to operate the district, to actually operate it. Not anything that has to do with the education side. So we can use capital for that. We have our copier lease. That runs us about $160,000 a year. And then code compliance, these are the things that keep us in line so we don't have our code violations. We can pay for those every year. All our inspections, all our repairs, anything to fire alarms, kitchen hoods. All our inspections, all our repairs, anything to fire alarms, kitchen hoods, AEDs. We have our radio agreement with the county to use their, the towers, um, fire extinguishers, fire sprinklers, generator inspection and repairs. And as, as things get older, they need more repairs. Capital budget. Now, this is the maintenance side of the capital, of the, um, Mr. Stokes' maintenance budget. There's two pieces to this, the general fund, which is for repairs like fixing a broken window versus having to replace the entire window. So that's, there's always kind of a little question about that. You have your general fund and you have your capital fund. So, um, if we're going to repair a piece of the fence versus replacing the entire fence around a school, that would, those are kind of your differences, so. These are our big facility construction projects this year. We have Roger Weaver still on. I don't know if it's ever going to get off of, of this list, but hopefully one day. Um, LaCanto Middle School fire alarm, LaCanto High School partial HVAC, Imbernus Middle School intercom, LaCanto Primary School re-roof, Imbernus Middle re-roof. And then we have a contingency fund and consultant fees. Here's our five-year plan. And, um, as you know, there's no major construction, just repairing and maintaining the buildings that we have and taking care of, um, taking care of what we have with the little money that we do get. The last thing's to come out of the capital budget. We have, um, we're able to transfer some money from there into the general fund to cover our facilities salaries, maintenance salaries, code compliance salaries, and planning and gross salaries. We also added that five hundred thousand dollars a year for safety and security. Um, we buy vocational equipment and then classroom furniture. We have our portables that we leased out at Citrus Springs. And then we're able to bring in, um, a hundred dollars per FTE, which the statute actually changed, but we don't have any eligible expenses to bring in anymore, um, per FTE for property casualty insurance. And then we have a couple thousand dollars for our debt service fees. Alright, that's the capital fund, alright? Any questions on that? Alright, make sure, okay, we're almost there. Food service is, uh, remaining pretty strong. I'm trying to see, these numbers are very small. Uh, their bottom line, their ending, it looks like about three point four million, a little bit better than last year, um, but nothing drastic. And then, um, he looks like at the end of next year, he'll be down to about two point seven eight, which, as you know, they cannot carry more than three months of operating expenses in their fund balance. So, um, that's why Mr. Pistone budgets every year to try and buy some equipment and different things like that. Sometimes the equipment comes in after July, so it doesn't hit the last year, it'll hit this year, so it's kind of a shuffle game there. Our other federal programs, this is just our grants, our IBA, our vocational ed, adult ed, um, teacher principal training, Title I. These are our salaries for this. The only thing that's been pushed over right now is salaries. Most of our grants haven't even finished out last year to actually get, they have tentative awards for a lot of them. But a lot of them, we don't, we should get them, we're pretty sure we'll get them, but we don't budget for them until we get those award letters. Self-insurance fund. Now the self-insurance fund, we're ending this year at about six point six seven five million and budgeting to end right about the same place next year. So, um, their budget is gone up about thirteen point nine percent. That takes into account their fund balance goes into that percentage, so remember that. So the fund balance increases, the budget increases. Okay, our truth in millage, this is what was in the paper on Saturday. We had our notice of proposed tax increase, and this is because we were over the rollback rate. So even though the millage went down, property values went up enough that we, um, were over the rollback rate last year. I found an interesting thing when I was filling this out is that the value adjustment board values actually increased eighty-two thousand dollars by the, uh, value adjustment board instead of decreasing. So, um, the required portion is one point four two percent. It's just six tenths of the total proposed taxes. So we're just a little bit over the rollback rate, one point four two. It's nothing, you know, we're nothing drastic. Um, here's the same one I had earlier, just in the form that you have to for TRIM, which is all the funds together, the two hundred and forty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seventy-two dollars. And then this was our capital outlay. We have to, um, delineate what we're going to use our capital funds for so that the voters can, um, you know, come to the meeting if they want and speak on any of this. And this is all required by TRIM. And so today, you will be voting on that. And, um, tomorrow, I will submit this vote to the property appraiser, the tax collector, the Department of Revenue. And, um, then we'll get our final resource budget, human resource budget entered. And the tax notices will go out to everybody and we'll approve the final budget in September. And that's my, my little show.
More members, do we have any questions?
And I made it all the way through. Yeah, it's a spear, seventy slides, wow. So any questions at this time? Now that we have all this, we'll start budgeting, we'll get final numbers, we'll start budgeting the carryovers, we'll see how much our categoricals we have to carry over. Um, usually we spend all our SAI dollars and our, our, um, class size reduction dollars. WTC always has money that gets carried over. We have a little bit of the SAC money carries over and, um, you know, different things like that, categoricals come through. Textbook money, if we don't use it, we carry it over for next year. We have to, those are the things we have to reserve. We have to reserve those. We can't just go use textbook money for electricity or new positions. We have to use them for textbooks. So that is where the reserves come in, so.
The enhancement monies typically come in later in the, of recent years.
We got them June twenty-fourth.
We did. So if the SACs come up with a plan, do, do first the, the schools that have maintained eight, I want to say eight plus money.
That money, the, the school recognition money came in for last year, came in like in, uh, September, October, and they got their bonuses. And then the rest of the money that's left over for last year only came in in June. So that is last year's money. So they'll, they'll be getting, the principals will be getting their new.
So this money is actually last year's money?
Yes, last year's money. We also did just get the check, the teacher lead, um, by using the cards that the state has suggested now. They send all the money back. The teachers don't spend and they get to put that in their SAC committee. We got about thirty thousand, which is actually more than we got from the state. So that'll go back to each of the schools. So they'll have that whole budget to work with next year, plus whatever they rolled over at their first SAC meeting. And they'll have those figures by the end of this week to know how much they have in their SAC committees.
Any idea per pupil roughly what that?
No, I don't know off the top of my head.
And I'm sure you wouldn't have, but I just thought you might.
You were hoping.
Yeah, just in case. Was really hoping it was going to say close to five dollars a pure person, but I don't think this.
It was.
I want to say it's about, it sounds like it's about two or three, if that's.
It was about twenty-eight thousand total, so that's about two or three.
Two or three dollars.
But then they have their teacher lead money, which is about thirty, and that doesn't get, that gets distributed to school by school. So however, whoever doesn't spend their money, that money goes back to the school now. So that's, that's been a really nice part of the teacher lead.
But if it was two dollars a student, thereabouts, that gives you an idea of what your SACs, what they may be talking about.
So lead money this year, which I think will be exciting, um, should be, is going to be three hundred dollars per teacher. So, um, the card company just sent us the file today and with all the card numbers. So now we have to create all the invoices with the new card numbers and get that out. And the teachers should have it during pre-planning week. I'm going to be hopeful it'll be Friday, but I don't think it's going to be, so.
Do longer.
If it's within our power to get it out Friday.
That would be.
It depends on the card company, because they're, they're actually creating the cards now. First, they have to give us the numbers, and now they actually have to create all those cards and then drop ship them at the schools. And we have to put money on them, so.
Is there any way to maybe communicate with, like, the local Walmart or something? Because on the card, it has the tax exempt information, but I've been with a teacher and the process gets lengthy. And the problem is, is if, if someone just skips that, that becomes, I mean, that's, it doesn't may not seem like a lot, but if you take it three hundred times the number of teachers, that can be a significant amount of money that gets paid in taxes.
I can have the girls call the local, the big markets, the Walmart, the Walmart and Office Max and let them know that, you know, our teacher lead cards are out, you know, and we do, when we send out the script, the principals are supposed to read a script to the teachers, it tells them to make sure you let them know ahead of time you're tax exempt. That's the big thing, then letting them know they're tax exempt before they start bringing up the purchase, I think, is a, is a big issue. But it seemed to go a lot smoother last year. I think the stores are used to the card being, it being on the card and, and all that, so.
And do, do long-term subs get them too?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and recess our, um, our workshop and open up. I said recess the workshop.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay, we're going to recess the workshop. We're going to go ahead and, uh, open our hearing, um, our budget hearing. And I am going to call the meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget of Citrus County School Board for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year. This is an advertised public hearing. Public notice of this hearing appeared in the Citrus County Chronicles on July twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. The tentative millage rate, uh, for required local effort is three point eight, seven, seven, zero mils, which includes no mils for previous prior adjustments and is an increase of one point four two percent over the rollback rate. The tentative millage rate for the discretionary is two point two four eight zero mils, which includes capital outline. The total tentative millage rate is six point one two five zero mils and is an increase of three point three nine percentage over the rollback rate. The tentative budget is two hundred and forty-three million, eight hundred, seventy-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars and zero cents. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board as to the millage levy or any item within the budget? Is there anyone here wishing to come forward to, who wishes to speak on the millage levy or any item on the budget? Last call? Is there a motion to adopt, um, and I'm sorry, there, there was no one here to speak. Is there a motion to adopt tentative local required effort millage rate of three point eight seven seven mils, which includes no mils for prior, for prior period adjustment for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of three point eight, seven, seven, zero mils for operating purposes.
I second the motion.
Linda Powers moved and Ginger Bryant seconded the motion to adopt tentative local required effort millage rate of three point eight, seven, seven, zero mils for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate of point seven four eight zero mils for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate of point seven four eight mils for operating purposes.
Doug Dodd moved and Sandy Count seconded the motion to adopt the local, the tentative local discretionary millage rate of point seven four eight zero mils for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of one point five zero 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 mils for capital outlay purposes?
I move to adopt tentative millage rate of one point five zero 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 mils for capital outlay purposes.
I second the motion.
Linda Powers moved and Ginger Bryant seconded the motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of one point five zero 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 mils for capital outlay purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. These millage rates represent a total millage rate of six point one two five zero mils. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate?
I move to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Counts, move, seconded by Doug Dodd, to approve the resoluc, I'm sorry, to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County Florida did pursuant to Chapters two hundred and one thousand and eleven Florida statutes, approved tentative millage rates for the fiscal year July one, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And whereas at the public hearing in the full compliance with Chapter two hundred Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates in the amounts of required local effort tentative millage rate, three point eight seven, three point eight seven seven zero. Proposed amount to be raised forty-one million, two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Basic discretionary tentative millage levy, zero point seven four eight oh. Proposed amount to be raised, seven million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Capital outlay tentative millage levy, one point five zero zero zero. Proposed amount to be raised, fifteen million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand and fifty-five dollars. The total millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate by three point three nine percent. Now therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of Citrus County adopted each tentative millage rate for the fiscal year July one, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, on July thirty, July thirtieth, two thousand nineteen by seven vote prior to adopting the tentative budget.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal school year in the amount of two hundred and forty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars?
I move to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year in the amount of two million and two million, I said two hundred and forty-three million, sorry, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars.
I second the motion.
Linda Powers moved and Ginger Bryant seconded the motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year in the amount of two hundred and forty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of Citrus County School Board for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year.
Second.
Doug Dodd moved and Sandy Count seconded the motion to approve the resolution adopting send the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year.
A resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County Florida did pursuant to Chapters two hundred and one thousand and eleven Florida statutes, approved tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for the fiscal year July one, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And whereas the School Board of Citrus County set forth appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And whereas at the public hearing in the full compliance with Chapter two hundred Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates and the budget in the amount of two hundred and forty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seventy-two dollars for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. budget in the amount of $243,879,072 for fiscal year 2019-2020. Now therefore be resolved that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County including the millage rates is set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as a tentative budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until a final budget is approved?
I move to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted.
I second the motion.
Sandy Count moved and Linda Power seconded the motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. A final budget hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, September 10, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Citrus County School Board District Office, District Services Center located at 1007 West Main Street on State Road 44, Inverness, Florida. That's here. With that, we are adjourned. I'm going to reopen the workshop, and I'm done with my question.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, you're good.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing us to have the fifth Tuesday, and it gave us time to get a better budget, so. Just wanted to show.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dix.
It is good evening, correct.
I have four items to workshop this evening, uh, the first of which you've seen before on April 23rd. Uh, this is a request to review the revisions to Policy 3.40, Safe and Secure Schools. Uh, the Policy Informs Committee, uh, discussed it on June 20th, and the revisions include multiple, uh, sections in the policy. Uh, the revisions are required due to changes in statutes, and there are some items that are gonna be coming forward, uh, as part of the Florida Safe School Assessment, and a future update to address, uh, some other issues such as access to the school roof, uh, school building security, and, um, restricted use and that kind of thing. So you are gonna be seeing some future updates to this, as well as another policy called, uh, Active Assailant, which will be a classified policy, so it won't be available to the general public, but it will address, uh, active assailant. And with that, uh, I think Mr. Bradshaw may have some comments on this one, because after we had our last workshop, we had a meeting with, uh, Chief Grant and Sherry Searns and myself to go over everything, and, and Mr. Bradshaw also wanted to make sure it was comprehensive and that addressed everything in Florida statutes.
I, I mean, I basically took the new Florida's, uh, old, uh, Safe and Secure Schools policy and updated it with all the stuff that I could find as far as the new Florida statutes are concerned. I don't know if I have much more to say than that. I mean, if you have any questions in regard to, I'd be more than happy to address them. But, uh, obviously, it, it talks about school property, our statutory, now we have our emergency response, we have our safety and security, best practices portion of it, uh, emergency management, uh, preparedness, your fore-assessment, it's part of it, and, uh, basically, it's, uh, it tracks what the statute says, what the legislature said, and now that we have to have in a safety and construction plan, in which is, uh, school environment, safety, incident reporting, and safety procedure.
Is this pretty much apt to be an annual, at, at the very least, an annual re, probably re-updating and revise, revision because of the way this keeps?
Yes. I would imagine, at least for a few years, what, and, and, because what I've, what I'm seeing in, in some of the questions that I get, um, you know, some of us will, they put this in there, well, how does that tie into this, you know, to the statute? And I, I imagine that because of the, how fast this has moved along, that they'll start catching up and, and modifying other statutes that are gonna cause us to have to modify other policies that we have. Um, but I also see, um, you know, this, this policy gonna happen to come back and be admitted from time to time, yes.
At some point, are we have to have to start passing some type of, and I'm not sure I'm gonna use the term right, but almost a shade policy, where there are policies that we're gonna have to pass that won't necessarily be, uh, public record? I mean, they'll be public record, but they will, they'll be exempt from public access?
Yes. Yes, there's gonna be things that we're gonna have to do in regard, in the safety and security arena that, um, are gonna be required or are required by statute, and that, uh, we'll have to, we'll have to pass them, and they won't be public record anymore.
And I think that's similar to law enforcement, right?
It's similar to law enforcement, it'll be confidential. It's also similar, you know, to like our building plans and different things like that, you know, those types of things are also, you know, confidential and exempt. So, um, yes, we will have to do that, probably on multiple occasions.
What about the Florida Safe School Assessment, will that be one we can access or not?
The FSAT? What, what did you access?
Yes.
That you personally understood?
Many of these.
The, the FSSAT, uh, is exempt from public record. Um, we will have a meeting that we have to have to go over recommendations as a result of the FSSAT, but it's, it's kept at a fairly high level, because that document and the information that came therein is confidential.
And you'll be able to do this, but put in a public record.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dodd?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Yeah, I don't think we've workshopped this, though, before.
You did, yes.
We, we did workshop the, the.
You, you, we workshopped it a while ago, and then, um.
I re-read it. Okay, you re-read it afterward, okay.
Yes.
So, you know, we, we talked about on the first page, school crime and violence, and I think that's important, we address school crime issues. Um, you know, one of the things I would like, just to have a couple added things in here on the emergency response, um, on page 1 of 9, Roman numeral number 2, number 2, emergency response, it talks about who can call 911, and, you know, I, I know, in, in lieu of the time factor, we're gonna be, you know, we can make changes to this as we go, but, uh, so I'm not gonna, I don't think we need to make any wholesale changes here, other than if you look at, um, on page 2 of 9, the thing we need to make sure that our employees know is that all personnel are authorized to call 911 in the event of an emergency. So when we, you know, when I first read that, it, it talks about the superintendent or the site-based administrator calling 911, but it is in here that, you know, all personnel are authorized to call 911 in the, in the event of an emergency. I would like to say are authorized and encouraged to call 911 in the event of an emergency. I would also like, um, that if we look at the type of emergency, and, and this is, I guess it's important that we have it in policy, we have these emergency response agencies here, but you call 911, and not, the 911 center will determine the responding units. I mean, you don't have to, you know, ask for certain units, they're gonna, they're gonna send the units, but it's still good to have it written. But I think that we need to include, uh, criminal acts. Uh, if you look on the right, under type of emergency, emergencies including but not limited to fires, natural disasters, active shooter, hostage situation, bomb threats, you know, if we're gonna put natural, natural disasters, and I, I think we definitely need to say criminal acts, or, you know, you can call 911, and in Citrus County, that's the call for service, is 911. It, whether it's an emergency, or a crime, or suspicious activity, we don't want anyone thinking that, gosh, can I call 911 for this? Uh, oh, this isn't really an emergency. Um, you know, we want them to know that they have the, they're authorized to call 911.
Authorized and encouraged.
Yes, so I would like to see authorized and encouraged. I'd like to see the type of emergency that we include criminal acts there. And then, uh, on the Stoneman Douglas Commission, I mean, one of the issues that, that was stressed is that the, um, teachers and the employees at larger Stoneman Douglas High School did not know that they could call for a lockdown, and they, they use that term lockdown. And, you know, we've, we've developed, we go with the ALICE protocols. Uh, but one part of ALICE is the lockdown. And so I think it's, it would, it would be smart for us, we have in here, and when I talked to, uh, to Johnny Bishop, uh, to start with, you know, I wanted to say that all personnel are authorized to activate an emergency lockdown through the ALICE procedures. And, you know, in his response, and he had a good point, that, well, we don't just do lockdowns, there's all kinds of things. So I would like to see us where it says on number 2, uh, it says the comma, the ALICE protocol, that we just list that, the alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. If we could put that in the policy, so that our employee, our teachers, our employees, our personnel know that they are authorized to activate a decision-making process, to communicate through an alert, to lockdown, to inform, to counter, or evacuate. So, and I, I talked to.
Just spell out the ALICE.
Just spell out the ALICE acronym there.
That makes sense.
Um, I think that, eh, on the, on page, uh, 3 and 4, when we talk about the school safety specialists, the duties of the school safety specialists, and I, I do, I know Mr. Bradshaw's gone through the law, and there's, you know, these are all items there, but one of the other things, the school safety specialist does have to review the CESSAR data, uh, and does have to provide for the, you know, what I call the consistent reporting of, of school discipline issues. Uh, so, you know, I would like to see that included in the duties of the school safety specialists. I mean, we know it's there, we know it's, it's a requirement. Um, so I thought if we could add a number 6 there, and then I think the last thing I had. Uh, number 6, uh, review the, the CESSAR data and provide for consistent reporting of school discipline issues, or whatever wording, uh, you know, Mr. Bradshaw, the, whatever wording would go on, but, you know, uh, the school environmental, um, reporting system, the discipline records that we've talked about, you know, we've, we're working on that, and I know training, there's already been online training, all the principals and assistant principals are doing that through the Department of Education, right?
And then we're also gonna have a sit-in training as well.
Right. And so that's one of the things that, that we wanna do, is be consistent in reporting that data, and it is a requirement of the school safety specialist and mandate. So, um, I think we put that in there. And then on, um, the emergency management and preparedness on Roman numeral number 4, on page 4 of 9, um, the letter B, um, the emergency management and preparedness procedures for active shooter situations shall engage the participation of the district school safety specialist, it goes on to say, threat assessment team members, faculty, staff. I would like this to say the school safety guardians, comma, SROs. They fall right in line with what we wanna do. We've already heard Buddy Grant already talk to us about the training, when we had the guardians in here, all the training that's going on, we might as well put it in there, because when we do active shooter situations, we wanna have the participation of the school safety guardians and the SROs. Would there be any concerns, did you go on that and just spell that?
No, that's good.
I noticed that wasn't, um, wasn't there. And then on the safety procedures on page 8 of 9, Roman numeral 8, um, you know, if you look at the prior plan, and, and, you know, there's been a lot of changes, and so we're updating this Safe and Secure Schools plan, that, you know, we talk about our, our school safety plans, and we still have a school safety plan, and so I, I think on B, we should add, uh, something in there about the school safety plan. And I don't know, maybe that's not the right place for it, but it says each principal, site administrator, transportation official is responsible for the following. I mean, isn't each school principal still responsible for having their school safety plan? And, and so I think we just put it in there as, as a number 4.
Probably number 5, because there is a number 4.
There is a number 4 on the same page, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there, though, I thought there was a, that there was discussion particular to that, about that being the school safety specialist coming up with that plan, and maybe I'm wrong, but I, I thought in committee, that was a conversation. Does anybody recall that? Um, that that was a conversation about the, whether administrators should be writing that, or whether that's really a level of expertise that was really more for the school safety specialist.
I think it says that.
Assist with that.
Yeah. So the, the way the plan's developed is, you know, the four, four fifths of it are, is generated by me. And then there's specific pages, like, listing out, you know, who your incident team is for your school, where your AEDs are kept, you know, there are certain pieces of that plan, about the last 10 pages that are filled out for each school specifically, so that they have their pieces for, and then that makes up their school's plan. But, yeah, four fifths of it is sent to them already done, they're just basically filling in the last 10 pages of just, I don't wanna get into everything that's in those pages, but.
The last 10 pages.
The last 10 pages of just general information about the school that they add to it and make.
That's specific to their.
Yes, sir.
And it does fit in this statement, is that each principal, site administrator, transportation official is responsible for the following. You know, if you look at those, we're talking about evacuation, ALICE procedures, training staff members, reporting hazardous areas, you know, adhering to.
Well, they're, they're, they're responsible for developing and posting the emergency activa-, evacuation. Did they actually develop the emergency evacuation plan? I mean, administer, our, our school-based administrators would do that? I mean, it's not, I guess I would have assumed the district somewhere was involved in that, and then they, they assisted in it and then followed it.
I knew you were talking before about some schools, the teachers not knowing what to do, not, wouldn't know that they could do this or that, or we get too many things in here.
That's what I'm.
One person in charge.
Exactly.
You'd be back in that situation now.
And that, that's actually what was, I thought, some of that conversation, and I, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Dodd, about the way the wording states of the responsibility, but that, and I, but now when you state about the developing, it comes to mind, is that really an expertise of this, of an administrator, or is that really what we need to be putting as the expert, of the, you know, put onto the expert?
Right, and again, maybe I'm not, not so much in developing the school safety plan, but in following the school.
Oh, that I agree with, that I concur with. But it, but the wording right now is, it shows as developing, and I'm just thinking, I can imagine if you.
I was gonna put that in as a separate number, like, the.
No, but number 1 does say developing.
Make it C instead of, make it C instead of number, number 5 under B?
Well, the, you know, the, the thing is, is our previous plan talked a lot about the school safety plans, you know, and I don't, I don't wanna say, it's not like we scrapped that, because we haven't. So I'm just saying somewhere in here, we need to say that, you know, they're responsible for their school safety plan, um, and following the school safety.
Well, that's why I could see, you know, that number 1, follow and post the, you know, or follow, assist in developing, um, and posting, or, you know, however that would be, you know, you knew I'm not the wordsmith, but, but I mean, it, because I can certainly see that, but I, that was my only thing, is who's the expert, and, and too many cooks in the kitchen on, on something where, so that's just the, the thought.
And it might be that you add what the district is gonna be responsible for with our safety officer, and then most of the schools would participate to their specific needs. I, I don't wanna scrap the idea that the district is in charge of a consistent and uniformed safety plan for each of our schools, and then the principals can add whatever they need because of their specific locations and things like that. But you've got the district thing, you've got the ALICE program, and then anything that they need specific to their school, they could. But I think, I think.
They make it a separate, uh, separate.
Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna lose the consistency that we've established.
Yeah, I agree.
Right now, all of them know exactly what they're supposed to do as a school, and if you start giving the principals some latitude, then they, they'll say, well, you told me I could do this.
Right.
And I don't wanna know that I'm doing anything that, that's not consistent with our overall policy.
Does, does that seem to correlate with, you know, Mr. Mullin, with you, with, you know, what we're, we're trying to avoid, is, is that thinking, are we on the right?
You, you wanna make a C?
Well, I think, well, I, I don't know how it, it was gonna get wordsmithed, but my concern was just, again, to make sure that we were trying to articulate it being more district-designed with input by the, the school, as opposed to school-designed.
Yeah.
If that, you know, as far as the plans and the, and the protocols are concerned, because again, it, the, the concern I think is, is, okay, so if we, if it's been decided that the district X is being done, um, then we're not gonna, if, you know, then it would allow, well, it's really the administrators just gonna, they can come up with their own plan. I know that's, that in reality, you all would have something to say about that if it didn't follow that, but I guess we're trying to just make sure our policy's consistent with that.
And if our safety officer submits a, the overall plan, and the last 10 pages need some input, that, I don't think we need to say it anywhere here. The 10 pages need to be completed by the principals and sent back to the district. The 10 pages need to be completed by the principals and sent back to the district. And if we have to look at any one of them individually, then you can bring it to us.
But if you look at what we had, though, if you look at the, the previous policy, you know, it says each school shall, shall develop and maintain an updated plan based upon the uniform guidelines. So again, what I'm saying is, the old plan, we talked a lot about the school safety plans, which are still very active and real, but this new policy, I've read nowhere in here where it said school safety plan.
Well, that's where I thought somewhere in here it was put in that that was the school safety specialist's responsibility to do that. And maybe I'm, I'm wrong, but that was what I, was under the impression.
I don't want us to leave the school safety plan out of this Safe and Secure Schools.
No, no, I don't think it was, but somewhere in there I thought it was put under...
With the school safety specialist to do the school-specific portion of the safety plan. That would be fine.
That sounds good.
Mm-hmm. That would be good.
Thank you.
Did you get that checked?
Yep. Any other comments on this one? Okay. We'll make those changes.
It's okay, we can change it next month when they send us a new update.
Yeah.
You're surprised when you are going to be getting it.
Are you all comfortable with what it is, depending on the regular meeting agenda, approval for advertising, any more changes we can make at the regular meeting? Or do you want to workshop it again?
No, I think we ought to keep moving forward.
I think we can move on it. I just think that we do need, our board knows that we may have to, we may have to update it again relative to...
Yeah, I think if we don't pass it now and move forward with doing that, we're going to be sitting there, we're going to be making revisions to it, I think, almost continuously.
I agree. So we're just put it on the next board meeting, then...
To set the public hearing.
Yeah. New to refer to the public hearing.
And I think even if there are changes at that point, if, if we should pass the current version and then immediately, you know, just go into doing the other one, then we just keep doing that. That may be what we have to keep doing.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next item is Policy 4.60, District and Statewide Assessment Program. This matter was discussed by the Policy Informs Committee in June, and it's a revision to Section 3, due to revisions in the Florida statutes, and it just says a student enrolled in an advanced placement international baccalaureate, or advanced international certificate of education course who takes the respective APIB or ICE assessment and earns the minimum score necessary to earn college credit, does not have to take the EOC assessment for the corresponding course in order to earn the scholar diploma designation.
I like that.
Yeah. It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
And the third one is revision of Policy 4.70, Home Education. This is a complete rewrite. Revision is recommended by NEFAC, however, some additional revisions were made to make sure it was comprehensive. The previous policy was only like one paragraph. Ms. Humble is here, if you have any questions about this one. And the last one is, is Policy 5.09, Requirements for Original Entry. This one came from Pam. Matter was discussed by the Policy Informs Committee in June. There were some additional revisions that were discussed by the board members which required additional revisions to be made after the April approval. And this, this has to do with the documentation for health examination and immunization. Basically, we had a problem with having people that didn't get their immunizations and/or examinations in a timely manner, so that's why this...
And that's happened ever since we here, and even though it says they have to get it right away, never was that enforced, never.
And there is a provision here for homeless students and others who need an exemption or extension.
And maybe, maybe there should be some more follow-up on that, because I know when I was a cancer, this used to press it terribly, that no one follows the guidelines for getting these shots or whatever.
And no one checked on follow-up?
No one checked. And now it's particularly important because so many people are getting diseases that we thought were gone.
Right.
So I think we need some follow-up on this one.
I think when they started tracking, when they saw how many there were, and that's when they decided it was time to tighten it up a little bit, because a lot of the districts don't give them a 30-day window. They just say you have to have your shot.
Now, if you're part of the college, it's not just the babies, I mean, college kids to get certain shots too.
Because they're real diseases that are, can be fatal, I think. And you understand, like, the homeless, they're homeless and cattoyed, and they have to be helped.
Right.
But those who just don't want to get it, I think that we have to be, we have to force it.
And I think this is consistent with the statute. The statute says, I think you can give a 30-day, but you don't have to, so it's a problem you shouldn't. That concludes the policy workshops.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board members, anything else? We're adjourned.